To an order and this would be a good time, let's see. The binder is in the back, a public copy for board materials containing board meeting materials and meeting agendas available for the public. Let's see. The public has access to all of agendas on the Rockridge site. And we can do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Then let the record show that John is gone. And I believe everybody else is here. Oh, Cora's not here.
Yeah, and I emailed her reminding of the days we meet for meetings and that we were meeting tonight. And I haven't heard anything, so.
Okay. Um, can I get an approval of the agenda?
I would like to make an addition.
So do I.
I'd like to make.
So do I. I do too.
I'd like to make an addition of a discussion about days off for not only state, girls' state basketball, but there's also Bantam A's, P U A teams that are going to state that may impact our our student population, our teachers, et cetera. And then for potential or possible action.
Okay.
And where are we going to put that then?
After the 4:15.
Before the 5.0. Or 5.1.
Yeah. Do we have to number that then?
I don't think so.
You can just put 5A or whatever.
Five.
I would like to add something, Madam Chair. I'd like to have college in the schools added for discussion and action tonight.
And we'll do that right underneath the first line.
So we're putting the discussion on before, days before the administrative items?
Before 5.1.
Yeah, 5.
Yeah.
5's.
Yeah.
5A.
Okay. Yeah. So we've got like a 5A and a 5B?
Yeah.
Yep.
Cool. Where do you go?
Mine, we're both of yours, so we're covered. We're all good.
Well then.
We'll have to do four more.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve the amend, approve the agenda as.
As amended.
For. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Passed. Recognition of any visitors or visitor input.
You're the official kind keeper.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
You guys have three minutes. Just state your name.
Hi, I'm Ethan Bell.
I'm Nolan Peterson.
And we are both juniors here at Rockridge High School. We are, we're in sports. We do a lot of stuff. And one of the biggest ones that's come up recently is our girls made it to the state tournament. And we would like to talk a little bit about why we would like to have some days off this week. So we, so. Yeah. So between the students and the faculty, there's been a lot of talk on if we would have school off on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, any of the above. And in my own thoughts. Um, there's been a lot of opinions going around. And we would like to just state a couple ideas that we had. Um, one of them being homework. So a lot of kids have homework in their classes along with their college and the school classes that they would get behind on and that with it being the end of the quarter should be something that we're not as worried about if we're wanting to go support our girls' basketball team. Cause along with homework and that, it is also just a great achievement to make it to a state tournament. Like all sports would like to do it. In sports, in clubs, there is always like a state that you can go to or regionals or something like that. And that is a great achievement that I believe that we should be recognizing. And the best way I feel like we can do that is take some days off of school this week. Just be able to go down there and support them and show just our customs and how we can support our school and show our Wolverine pride. One of the ideas that has been brought up to me today is that we have not used any snow days this year. We've had pretty good weather and there's been, I believe, nine days that we have for snow days that we have not been able to use for any because we've had pretty good weather this year. Um, and then there is both the mental and physical health of both students and faculty and just people around here. Obviously, there's been a lot of sickness going around. I know I've experienced it and so did Nolan. And I bet about half people in this room have also gotten sick over the past couple weeks. And then there was also another incident going around the school that may have caused people's mental health to also be down and bringing stress and concerns to people's families. And that maybe just a couple days off could take some weight off their shoulders. Like let them enjoy spring coming in. A lot of the snow is melting. We're having nice weather. People like to go on walks. I've seen a lot of people going on walks with their dogs recently. Um, yeah.
Like you said, it's not every day that you get to see a team or a club from your school make it to a state tournament. That being said.
Can I stop you for one second? Since there's two people there speaking, can we just make sure he gets his three minutes as well?
Sure. Yep. Good point.
Yeah, cause she's a stickler, I'll tell you.
Sorry to interrupt. I just want to make sure you have enough time.
Yeah, so like I was saying, um, it's important that we just capitalize on every opportunity we get to make as deep of a run into the state tournament as we can. Because obviously, it takes an incredible amount of time and effort to make it that far. And I think by allowing as many people to be there as possible or just raising the bar for as many chances we can get to make a deep push into the tournament. So all that being said, that's what we have to say about that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys.
Are you giving us your time? Give the kids a day off. They're going to skip anyway if you don't give them a moment. I wanted to talk about something that I saw in your February 10th meeting. And this is your budget parameters. And this is based on forecasting future enrollment. And this column here has the actual M D E progression method or the cohort survival method is also known, which is like the gold standard of forecasting future enrollment. The state of Minnesota says you're going to 94.4% enrollment capture. Someone also created a less aggressive model. It came up to 95.2%. On February 24th, this document was in your board book. Miraculously, your less aggressive model has now done to 98.2% retention. There's an old saying, you know, hope for the best, prepare for the worst. When you're budgeting, this number here from the state of Minnesota is the worst. That's what you prepare for. You budget based on this number. If you hit this number 98, great. You get extra money. But if you budget for 98 and the state is right, you're looking at an extra million dollars of lost, of in further in the hole. Another thing, I gotta give credit to these teachers over here cause there's a line item on this about a loss of 50 students in the current 10th grade class who are going to be going into 11th grade. There's only 150. The senior year class next year will be 200. The juniors are only 150. Of those 150 juniors, 15 of them are on the exemplary honor roll. 32 of them are on the A honor roll. That's one third of that entire class. Now, I don't know, someone in this room probably knows what, what the percentages are of students that go into full-time P S E O in this school. But if you've got one third of an entire class that's at that success level, I imagine you're going to have half of them that are going to do P S E O. Which means that your budget shortfall here of 525,000 based on that smaller class is going to be closer to 750,000 if you have 25 of those kids do P S E O. We want this district to be successful. The problem is we're at $4 million in the hole. If you don't budget correctly, the next number's going to be five. And trying to dig your way out of that is going to be next to impossible. Your financially responsible, financial responsibility of this board is to manage the dollars, right? These dollars, when, when you set up this budget, please. The University of Minnesota, University of Massachusetts, this is what you should use for forecasting your budget and, and forecasting your future enrollment. And just follow the data. There's no opinion here. This is all data driven. Anybody can look it up. You all know a calculator. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
Can you just present, you three minutes and can you give us your name?
Thank you.
Thanks.
I must look like a first timer and I am. My name's Tiffany Soterman and I am the executive director at Apple Tree Learning Center in Virginia. We have been on the Iron Range for 40, oh God, 44 years, 1981. And we've been in our current building for over 30. Our building this year recently experienced water damage during, due to some roof issues. We purchased the building in Evelyn with the help of the I triple R and are so grateful to be able to continue providing care to our families. Currently, we're running into some issues that stand in the way for our families regarding busing. Rockridge buses kids from all across the Iron Range going as far as Cook on a daily basis. But we don't bus across city lines within our own district. This is a policy unlike any that I've experienced in my over 20 years in childcare working all over the state of Minnesota. It's even more crucial in our area that we bus to major childcare centers as there is a childcare crisis. Um, once we move our location, there will be one licensed facility in Virginia and one licensed facility in Evelyn. Um, we are being told to send our kids outside of the district to childcare centers because we will bus there. We will bus them to Mountain Iron. Um, but we won't bus them to a childcare center five miles away from where they live. Um, as of next week, we will be down to the two childcare centers in our district. Apple Tree will be opening in Evelyn, serving 149 children. 13 school agers will be impacted by this bus situation and their siblings as well, brings it to about 20 students that we can face losing in our childcare center and that the school might face losing in their schools. If they can move their kids to Mountain Iron and be bused anywhere, that's going to look like the better option. I have two children myself that will be affected and I have to figure out how me and my employees are going to manage to get off work, run our kids in the morning, get back to Virginia, pick all of our kids up. I can't imagine, you know, I'm the boss. I can make my schedule, but most of our families can't do that. Um, parents don't have other options and they need consistent care. Bus seven currently takes Apple Tree students to our location of Virginia. Then they go directly to the Rockridge High School. That is one block from our new location. There would be no cost or inconvenience, at least in the afternoon, which is when the most number of our children ride the bus. I implore you to do what's right for our youngest students. They deserve to stay where they're comfortable. All of our other childcare centers are full. We are full. There is no place for them to go. We're in this together. We need to support our working families on the Iron Range.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Amanda Wilson or Amanda Metz, my email still reflects. Um, if you got an email from me, usually I'm here to talk to you about union business. And while there are certainly intersections with our bus drivers, today I'm here to talk to you about something that is significantly more personal. Um, I am a parent of two children who attend Parkview Elementary and we live in Virginia. They're here tonight in the hallway attending a meeting with me and they've had the misfortune of being at other, many other meetings for my work since Apple Tree closed temporarily last month. It's proven to be a hardship for both them as children and for me as a working parent. Both of my children started attending Apple Tree when they were about 15 weeks old. As you can imagine, at that age, we didn't pick Apple Tree because it was within the district's busing boundaries or because it was close to home or close to school. We picked it after a search across 40 miles of the Iron Range because it was the only childcare in home or center based with an open infant spot when I needed to return to work after my first child was born. Since then, it's become much more than just a spot to me and family. It's very much a second home and a place my children depend on. They attend until almost 6:00 PM every night and are regularly babysat after hours by the staff who work there. Spots remain tight, as Tiffany just said, and we cannot just up and leave, even now that the center is moving to Evelyn and we shouldn't have to. The district's transportation rules should reflect and respect the scarcity of licensed, center-based, and there's my trouble, um, care and the fundamental difference between this care and in-home care. You can and you should guarantee transportation to the two centers in this district. Even if you can, especially if you can guarantee transportation to Mountain Iron Tower and Cook. I also know a fair amount about the transportation outside of our district boundaries. My children live halftime with their dad in Orr. That means for half the week they ride the bus, Bus Seven, from Parkview in Virginia. Every day they're on the bus when it picks up at North Star and they stay on the bus after it drops at the current Apple Tree location in Virginia, riding that same bus all the way to this very parking lot to pick up other kids riding the Cook or to the Cook stop. And because of that, I know that it would require no extra time to travel the quarter mile down Industrial to drop them before picking up the Cook kids here and it certainly would require no extra money. Our superintendent told this center and its director that it would cost $20,000 to transport these kids for just the remainder of the school year. As she just said, that's not true. At best, it's an extreme exaggeration. At worst, it's a cop-out to avoid change and it demonstrates a lack of attention to this very real and very pressing problem for the working parents you all represent. I cannot emphasize this enough. Without transportation to school, after-school daycare, without the ability to maintain this almost decade-long stability for my children at Apple Tree, I cannot continue to send my kids to our home district. And I know I'm not alone. Please address this issue with your staff and protect transportation to licensed childcare centers like this local business in your home community and like you already do for communities outside our district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nicole Reed. I'm a second grade teacher at Parkview Elementary School. And I see you added to the agenda that you're talking about canceling school at the end of the week. While our second grade at Parkview has a field trip to the Rife Center to see a play on Thursday, which is a $720 bill that has already been sent to the Rife and it's not refundable. So if you cancel school, we don't get that money back and the students don't get to go on that field trip. So I just wanted to let you know that if you cancel school, our second graders are going to be missing out on an opportunity also. So I kind of just wanted to let you know.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Anybody else?
Was there anybody that reached out? Maybe Noel? Cause, does anybody reach out about Archery? I thought there was somebody that was on for discussion for tonight.
Um, they, they wanted to, you know, but they're not here. So it will, it's a discussion topic that will come up again. Um, we'll pick it up in another school board meeting. That would be my suggestion.
It sounds like there's a timeframe on there, so I think sooner the better if we could get it on the agenda for our next meeting.
Yep, we will do that.
Okay, nobody else wants to, everyone, we're done with visitor input. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Now the, at the very beginning, we added on for discussion and, um, possible action is, um, P S E O revamped the college and the schools, advanced placement and courses in the high school to go three days a week and the weighted grade only for C I S and A P courses.
I think our first one is the basketball discussion.
Oh, was it? Okay. I apologize. Okay.
Take the tough one first.
Yeah. So, okay, we'll do, we'll do that next and we'll do the basketball.
The C I S, you mean.
The C I S.
Basketball first, C I S second.
Basketball first.
Right. So we're going to the basketball. Questions about school closure for the Bantams and the girls' basketball. That's what's been added.
And P U's. And that. Bantams and P U's. And Bantam A's. P U A's and our girls' basketball too. I, I'm just concerned, I, I do believe that there will be a number of students that want to go and support and I want to support and advocate for that. Um, obviously, our girls would like and need those, that support too. But I'm concerned.
Have a motion first before we discuss.
Yeah.
I'll move that we close schools.
For, for what?
For, um.
For the school closure.
For a school closure for Wednesday, Thursday and Friday.
For how many days?
Well, we'd have to just.
And we can discuss that.
Okay. Close for three days.
Any, do we have a second?
Support.
No discussion.
Okay. So as I was saying, I, I have concerns about, um, you know, the number of staff being gone with all those different people going. Um, their parents are likely going as well and that includes some of our staff members and it's hard enough to find substitutes. Um, so I have a concern about that. Again, I, I think that it's important to, to support, support our kids wherever they may be going, um, whether it's hockey or, or, um, girls' basketball is just something that I think we need to have a discussion about. The only, the one thing that I reached out to Noel about today is daycare because when we did, when we closed the last time, we were able to provide daycare for those elementary age students. It sounds like it, not a lot utilized it, but I would like there to be an option if we do end up closing for however many days.
I'm sorry to interject, but what was the, how many people did utilize it? Do you recall?
I'm going from memory, there's an elementary principal in the back of the room, I think. How many kids actually came for that last year?
We didn't have it because there wasn't the interest.
No interest?
Yes. I mean, there was a few families, but we didn't, it was not open. Daycare was not open.
But we offered it, correct?
Yes.
Right.
And I know that was a big concern of yours, Nicole, last, last year to make sure that everybody was covered.
Right.
And, and am I right? We didn't have trouble with kids that stayed behind or teachers that everything was copasetic with last year?
We were closed.
We were closed.
And so, yes, it was copasetic because nothing happened. Um, and you, or you're in a tough one because you've got the athletic. And you, or you're in a tough one because you've got the athletic crowd once you let everybody go. You did hear from some other parents who are coming from the non-athletic group or they're not that athletic saying, just say, three days was a lot for some of these folks. So, but it's up to you as far as what you want to do. We heard it, I heard it both ways.
I do have a concern about the trip, you know, the second graders losing out on that trip.
Well, that's on Thursday.
And what, yeah, I was going to ask, what day was that?
They said Thursday.
I'm sorry. And I, you know, we, we received a number of emails in support of having days off. And the majority of the emails that I did see, totally honest, is Thursday and Friday off and not Wednesday because Wednesday is an early-out day, is what was stated. And people have the potential to get down there. It sounds like there's a four o'clock game.
I can't even get down there early out the way I drive.
That's a, that's a good point. So we can, we could amend it, like we could.
It was just a, it was brought up that that was.
Right.
But they are definitely playing regardless of win or loss. There is a game on Thursday, is what was, what was said in the emails. And then, again, there's, there's kids that are going to be gone too for, for hockey-related things. So, I was just wondering, I think they said seven hundred and twenty dollars it costs for.
Yeah, I hate that you lose out on that and I hope that we can, like, do that again because that is a neat event for the second graders. I feel bad about that. But I do know a lot of elementary kids and, I mean, I heard from a lot of them today and they're, that are going down and a lot of parents, teachers want to support and like are, the kids who spoke said, like, this is, this is a rarity. Yes, we did this last year, but I do think it's a rarity and it's important. We're going to have the band down there, we're going to have pom-poms down there, we're going to have a ton of teachers, kids. And I do think, being a new district, it does promote unity and school pride. And they also said it's been a, it's been a challenging week. And the other thing I'd like to mention that it is spring break for the kids that do PSEO. So that's a consideration, so that's kind of a good thing as well. I mean, I would be willing to amend the recommendation for time off instead of just do Thursday and Friday, knowing that the fan bus, I think, leaves around eleven on Wednesday. And I suppose, you know, that wouldn't be such of a hardship for some people. Maybe that would be a better scenario, I don't know.
And the kids that go on it, they won't be penalized or penalized for going?
Right, exactly, yeah.
Well, I have a lot of concerns about this. Because when I was running, that was one subject that came up with some young parents, that it was a real hardship from that last year when it was closed for three days. And one couple was new to the area, didn't have anybody that they could just call on. And I'm not, I'm sure they're not the only ones. So I do have a concern about closing school. I, I, I just think, and I, I'm a promoter of sports, I love sports, I love going to everything. But I, I'm wondering, the kids who want to go to, go to it, they should go. You know, if they've got the rides and everything, they should go. And, and they can't get penalized. I mean, we shouldn't penalize anybody that wants to go. It's free if you want to get, elementary kids, but I, I, I really am against it. I hate to say it.
There might be teachers that, you know, do assign homework. So we could say that their absences are excused or whatever, but there still might be teachers that, that give homework. But the other thing too that you had said, if we're offering daycare, that should help with the hardship of families that don't have relatives around here that can't take their student or whatever. But again, to reiterate, I mean, there is a lot, between all those sports that are going to be gone for state tournaments on the same weekend, that, that involves a lot of our staff members too. I, I know that, you know, some may think it's not a lot, but I do think that there's going to be a lot of staff members too. And staff that want to go down and support our students. But if you don't mind, I, I would like to ask one question of the second-grade teachers. How, how did you guys come up with that seven hundred and twenty dollars? Was it parent, families paid? Was it fundraising?
The PTA pays for that, but it's non-refundable, so we don't get it back. We've already paid, so it doesn't get, come back to us.
I mean, you can't reschedule.
The plays are already.
You can't reschedule?
You can't, like, go to another one.
Reschedule that in September. First week.
I mean, the teachers could take, if they have, what's it called? They have a couple days that they gave news.
Personal days?
Personal days or whatever, you know, and I'm sure the subbing situation, that's difficult. But I, I think about the kids too, that their last meal would be on Wednesday here.
Yeah. I, I do have concerns about that too.
Lisa?
But.
I'm sure. I'm a play devil's, I, I love sports, I'm for them. I'm going to be going down myself. I've only been to one other basketball game and that was for the boys, many years ago. Devil's advocate, so, two weeks ago, we had the wrestling, four wrestlers go. Never came to the board about letting school out. Last year, we did the, the girls. And don't get mad at me. If we would have gone down on hockey, now we're going basketball, next week, boys' basketball. Three days, three days, three days, that's twelve days we're going to cancel school. That's a hardship for parents, that's a hardship for students. I'm going down, but I don't have any ties to it. I just think that we should continue to have school and the, the staff that wants to go, go. And, and the kids that want to go, they're going to go anyway if we say yes or no.
And there should be no penalties for going and supporting.
But how could we possibly have staff going, especially the elementary staff? If they, how, how could we possibly have them go?
Well, you couldn't have all the staff. I know that we have so many, in, in different buildings, there can only be so many teachers that can take a personal day at a time. I also know that there are some staff that knew we were going to go through divine intervention in September. They, they took personal days off for this. There's not a good answer, but I think, yeah. I love sports, I played sports, my kids played sports. We're cutting budgets, we're an educational facility and we're going to take away from the youngest kids in second grade. And I think that we just say whoever wants to go can go.
Well, can we problem solve? I know that you can't do that, but can the second graders still go and can we figure that out? Or, I mean, I don't know how many second graders would still want to go. As far as the, the point to wrestling, like, wrestling really isn't, I love wrestlers, proud of them, great. It's not a spectator sport, like, not, not like the basketball is or swimming isn't like that as well. I was just talking to a parent who has a swimmer, I love swimming, it's super cool, but it's just a different kind of, like, they didn't have the band there. The band is going down, the pom-poms are going down, there's going to be tons of kids going down. And I don't know, I'm just in favor of specifically maybe amending my recommendation to Thursday, Friday. I do think we have childcare covered. I don't, actually, I really didn't hear much negativity. I had one person who was upset by this, but they were happy when we had childcare available. I do think, again, we didn't have a spring break, so we don't have, you know, kids didn't have any snow days. It's two days. Marquette, a lot of schools aren't, don't have school on Friday. And I guess, you know, I don't know.
And correct me if I'm wrong for the people that were on the board. Didn't we also get an email last year or emails? I, I seem to recall an email from a parent that was upset last year. Was it? Maybe not. I think I might be thinking of a different situation.
Noel, do we lose money if there's nobody in-house on a school day?
No, you don't lose money because that's not exactly how the funding works. Listening to your conversation, if you're looking for a compromise, depending who you are, this is not a compromise. We roll the buses no matter what. Maybe the elementary kids are in school that day and the secondary kids are not. That lets the elementary kids go, you've got all sorts of issues with that also. But you could do that if you wanted to.
I was thinking that too.
If you wanted to do that. Now, keep in mind, you're going to have, elementary teachers are now working. All of the elementary folks are now working and the high school folks are not. You're going to have.
How many elementary teachers do we have compared to high school? I just want to know how many hate mails I'm going to get.
It's not the same, it's the same. It's going to be a love-hate relationship evenly split. But that's going to happen, but you could do that.
I mean, that's.
Looking for a way out.
And if we left the school open, I'd request no homework for the kids if they chose to go down because that would be not very nice.
So basically, we'll be running a daycare. Right?
No, if, if we're running our elementary.
We'd be running a daycare. If, if there's no homework, they don't have, because they're missing.
No, I mean, for the high school.
Well, for the high school, for the elementary, if we have them going, it's basically a daycare. If they're not, if the kids aren't punished, you know, for missing instruction, right?
We wouldn't, we'd only, we'd only not have, she's saying we'd only have, not have homework for the high school because we're canceling high school for.
But we shouldn't, but we, somebody did mention not having any repercussions for missing. And that would be, there's, most of the emails I got, I got some from high school, but most of them were parents of kids in elementary that wanted it closed.
And if they, if we don't cancel, they're going to take their kids anyway. They're going to take their kids, I guarantee you, they're going to take their kids anyway. We say no tonight, I guarantee you that we're going to have hundreds of, hundreds of kids that are going to go anyway.
I'm worried about the staff that wants to go and that they can't go.
So we do that for the high school. I think that is a, is a nice compromise.
Here, I've got a question about that. If we were to have business as usual with our K through six students and have the high school off, is that going to cause a union issue with, you know, because one group of teachers is working more than another group of teachers?
Well, the grievances that might arrive are endless. So you're absolutely going to have some people annoyed with you. They're going to be annoyed at each other. But you're going to have a problem no matter what you decide here. You have people who want you to stay in school, you have people who want you to let them out, you have people who want you to do some kind of a split. Most schools in this situation, they will let the kids out of school on the day that the game is happening. Sometimes that happens. But if it's in the metro where these games take place, school is going. They don't close school down because the kids, boom, forty-five minutes, they're there, forty-five minutes, they're back home. Here, it's an all-day event, just getting there. So the situation is a little bit different. Two or three days is kind of unusual as far as length of time that schools are not busy for athletic events.
And you have to remember that kids that are going down on the bus for the four o'clock game on Wednesday are coming back that night. So if they want to go have a bus the next day, they're going to get up and, depending on what time it is, and go back down again and then come back on Thursday night and hopefully we win and we keep winning. The buses will just, the bus will continue to go up and back.
If we win at four o'clock on Wednesday, when will we play again on Thursday? Because I know they have the chart out.
I don't remember, do you?
Yeah, I'm seeing the chart. My computer is dead, but you can go to the Minnesota State High School League and look up our, our district and.
And let's see, okay, if we lose, then, then would they be playing for, like, they play again and would that be consolation bracket?
Say that again?
Would that be consolation?
If what, if, if they lose?
If they lost on Wednesday.
It's like two losses and we're out, so then, yeah.
Right, so there's a possibility that there's no play on Fridays.
Okay, so, okay, I'm going to amend my original motion. Let me just think what that will be. I would say then, because like you're right, like, early release.
Just so it makes it easier on our, on our new chair, why don't you withdraw?
And redo?
And have Jody say he will let you withdraw and then make a new motion?
Jody, will you, I'll withdraw.
Because it gets confusing when you have a line.
Gotcha. Okay. I, I move to close the schools on Thursday.
Okay, I want you to think about that first.
I know, I know, I know, I know, hockey, I know.
Second grade is Thursday. Yeah, and, and to your point, this is where you were going, is when will they play on Thursday? Could we have a whole day of school and they hop on the buses and go down? Or even a part day of school on Thursday and go down?
And if they don't play on Friday? You know?
No, you're right, because actually last year, I don't think they did play on Friday.
What time is the game on Thursday?
But there is still hockey that's going on.
Third place?
Yeah.
And you know, I think, I think that's a slippery slope talking about the Bantamays and the Pee-wee.
Twelve, two and four?
And consolation.
It's Youth Hockey Association, agreed, I get that. What my point is about the, the Bantamays and the Pee-wee-ays is the number of students that are going to be gone and the number of staff that might be gone. Okay, so even a half a day would.
So, I mean, it affects both, it's still affecting both the elementary and the high school. If you've got the Pee-wee's and the Bantams, that's elementary-age kids, is it not?
Correct.
And, and there is, there, there are parents of basketball players who teach elementary who, you know, they should be off the hook for, to be able to be down there to support their child. It's a lose-lose no matter what.
Welcome to the school board.
I, I worry about the kids that, you know, that rely on the food that we have here, that they get served breakfast and lunch. And I, I just think whoever wants to go, go, but there's not going to be any repercussions.
Okay, I move that we close school on Thursday. It's my motion. Anyone?
And not Friday, just Thursday?
Just Thursday.
Second?
Nope, is there a second?
I don't know. I'm, I'm trying to look quickly at the bracket here.
I just looked, two, noon, two and four.
Yeah. On what day, Thursday? Noon, two and four is when they potentially play.
Depends if they win or lose. If you're in, let's see, if they win, they play at two. They go consolation noon and if they go third place, they play at four, or something like that. Yeah, I have the bracket up.
On Thursday. But there's absolutely no way of rescheduling the Rife on a different day if, if miraculously it came up with one.
You have to get in in September or you don't get even tickets.
Oh, this is so complicated.
I.
Do we know when the, do we know when the Pee-wee's and Bantams play?
Okay, wait, I don't, I'm confused now. Huh?
Randy?
What?
Do we know when the Pee-wee's and Bantams play?
I know that the Bantams play Friday at noon. Then you're back at Thursday and Friday if we want to do it.
Well, I'm worried about Wednesday again because there's teachers that are going to want to go down on Wednesday too, that wouldn't be able to go. Yeah, because it's a four o'clock game, so an early release isn't early enough.
But would it be easy to find somebody to cover the class for an hour to leave at one? Because it's early out Wednesday.
Can I make a mo, you, you haven't had a second.
No, I'm going to shut down.
I'd like to make a motion that we only close the high school on Wednesday and Thursday.
Do I got a second?
I'll second. Only the high school Wednesday and Thursday, knowing that we'd probably get grievances.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
No. I have two loss, or four, four two loss, okay.
What did you vote, Lisa? No. Okay.
We gotta consider, I mean, in part, the elementary-age kids playing hockey and that are gonna be down on Friday. I mean, I motioned for.
They're not elementary though, they're, they're eighth grade.
Oh, eighth grade.
There's kids that are eighth grade, it's Bantums, so.
I thought Pee was, Pee was.
Yeah, somebody said Pee Wee too.
I thought it was sixth grade.
And Bantums, I know the Bantums.
He was in Bantums. So it impacts the elementary, that's nice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
None. We're talking a select few. One, one team and parents, so, and fans or whatever.
So that motion went down, do we?
Yeah.
Where are we at, guys?
Would there be less grievances if all three days, both elementary and high school, both?
That's what you did last year.
Right. Would there be less grievances? There wouldn't be the conflict.
There wouldn't be any.
You, no, you don't have grievances from people going there, you'll have grievances from people who don't believe the school should be out for three days.
Right.
Um, because of an athletic event or a couple athletic events. That's who you're gonna hear it from.
But to your point, we don't have a spring break.
No.
At all.
Couldn't, I, I don't know if this is even an option, but, um, because of the, the money that the PTA donated for the second grade for going to that field trip.
Yeah, that bothers me.
Is that something that the, the school district could have reimbursed the PTA for or not? Or is there a possibility of people pitching in to refund that amount of money to the PTA?
I, going off the top of my head, I don't think you can do that. Give money to the PTA to make up for a loss they suffered.
That we created.
It'd have to be, uh, they'd have to do it through donations or some other thing, I think.
So the school district couldn't reimburse them, but citizens that citizens could make a donation.
Right, cuz they're supposed to be operating independently of the schools.
I'm not worried about the seven hundred and fifty that.
I kinda am.
I'm, I'm worried because of the money. We're in education.
Yeah.
And now we're, we're taken away from, how many, is that all of the second graders?
All the second grade up here.
Yeah, so now we're taking that away from all of them. I mean, I'm just trying to make you people realize that everybody's getting hurt here. And some of them are our kids.
There's something to be said though for community pride though also.
Well, is, I mean, I know.
Nothing is stopping a community pride though. People wanna go, go. You know, and, and the, the, the last thing I'll make and then I'm gonna be quiet because I probably have four flat tires. If fifteen teachers go and we don't have subs, so be it. We've had, we've had days in the high school that we haven't had all the teachers on board and we still had school. Don't make excuses about spring break or no snow days. We're scheduled for so many days, this is an exception. Make your bed and sleep in it.
Why did you vote for it last year?
Who said I voted for it last year?
Ah, you did, it was, you know, I was the only one that was objecting cuz of the daycare.
I voted for it last year because the, the talk was as that we should do it. I, last year, also talked against it.
Okay, so I just have a dumb question. Why can't the second grade teachers still, still take the second grade if they want to?
Because the school would be closed.
Well, I mean, can we, like, they do.
Cuz we would have.
Activity, well, can, can we make that happen? Why can't we do that? I don't understand why we can't do that. Is that a, I know that's a dumb question, but I don't get it.
We are talking.
We do after, we do activities when there isn't school, like, why can't this?
We're talking, we're talking grievances, so now, we're only gonna make the second grade teachers work and only the bus drivers.
It sounds like they wanna work.
Well, yeah, I'm sure, but only they get to work and only the bus drivers that take them have to work and the rest of the FME group is odd.
Well, but they, maybe they volunteer their time, maybe they want to go and maybe they, because it, it's set up for how many months and it's already.
Let's just make a motion, let's make a motion.
I'm gonna make a motion, I'm gonna make a motion, I'm gonna make a motion that we close school on Thursday and Friday for the high school and the elementary. If we can make it work to be able to get the second grade to their, um, to the Rife um, with bus drivers that are okay with working that day and with teachers that are okay with working that day, then we'll do that.
Can we ask the teachers?
But what if we have second graders who have somebody in high school that's gonna be, they're going.
Then that's their parents' choice whether or not they're gonna go to the Rife.
I, I feel like it should be Wednesday and Thursday and not Friday.
Come back to school.
I, I have a question and I'm, you.
She's got a motion, we don't have a second, so.
And do we have a second for the motion of Thursday?
A second.
All those in favor?
Well, can we have discussion on it?
Oh, sorry, discussion.
And that's Thursday.
Thursday and Friday, right, for both the elementary and the high school.
I just, I, I feel like Friday, we don't need to have off, but it would be more important maybe to have Wednesday off and Thursday off.
And then my question is, is when we, if we were to have had the school open, now we got a motion going a different way, but with the school open, how would the transportation be for buses down to the kids?
You can have one bus. That's all that Bob Bus has available. When school is in session, there's only one bus that can go. Team, that's it. Like a fan bus, something like that. Otherwise, all your other drivers are moving around where they do.
That's a good point.
If they're open.
Uh, well, I made my motion, Jody seconded, so we need to vote. Okay.
Again, I wanna reiterate, I feel like having Wednesday, I mean, the game, the big game is four o'clock on Wednesday.
All those, all, sorry.
And they'll be playing on Thursday. They might not be playing on Friday.
All those in favor for Thursday and Friday?
Hold on one second. So, so are you saying maybe half day, half day Wednesday?
Can we do a half day or is that?
Half day Wednesday? And Thursday? Oh my gosh, okay, I, I've had a motion on Saturday, I'm gonna go back.
Is that possible to do a half day? I would just do the whole day Wednesday, whole day Thursday, come back to school on Friday.
It's tough to do a half day. It's, it's really hard.
Cuz you're a distance away. I'm sticking with what I.
But especially, yeah, especially with bus drivers.
I, I really am thinking it needs to be Wednesday and Thursday, but.
Well, then vote against it.
Okay.
Okay, so we're done discussing, discussing Thursday and Friday and all those in favor of the Thursday and Friday close, say aye.
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 Aye. Three to three, so that's a tie. So you can make your.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we're closed.
But she has to ask for the no's.
Yeah, she did.
Oh, she already asked.
There's only three yeses, we don't actually.
Okay, I make a motion that we close Wednesday and Thursday.
With the second grade?
We're trying to find a solution for the second grade, for sure.
Discussion, we're good, we've discussed it, can we?
Was there a second, was there a second?
No, there wasn't a second. Any, no second?
For the Wednesday, full day of Wednesday and Thursday.
Wednesday and Thursday. Mm-hmm.
Um, full day, I'll support them.
Yes. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, that'd be four of us.
And then two no.
Two no. So Wednesday and Thursday.
Alright.
Yeah. Okay. What a workout that was.
Okay. Okay, so everybody's clear, Wednesday and Thursday are off for elementary and high school this week.
I'll be, I'll be down there.
And we'll have bigger options.
I'll be down there with, and I'll be taking lots of voters, we'll see how many elementary kids are really at the game.
Well, I'm bringing like four myself, so, actually more than that.
Okay, moving on, we got lots to do here.
Okay, now, now with, um, the next one is PSEO on CIS and the AP class.
College and the schools.
Yes, yes, college, revamping the college and the schools placement courses to three days a week.
Noel, tell us about it.
Well, I'd love to tell you about that.
Thank you, fellas. Thank you.
They, here's what this situation, this was something brought up at a work-study session, that possibly because we have so many kids going PSEO and the attraction thereof, and so there's a proposal to, it would still be five days a week, college in the school. Three days a week would be the regular college in the schools, then the other two days would be smaller groups. So the kids who need help and support would come in for those other two days. Teachers would still be there. Teachers are still expecting to teach, they can't leave the room, the class is there. Uh, but the kids who are doing extremely well, they would not have to come in on the Tuesday and Thursday unless they wanted to, which they certainly could do. So the thought was that if we, that model's closer to what the colleges are running, three days a week, that that would help keep some kids in our building because it's partly a schedule thing. And then, and this would be advanced placement courses also. In addition to that, um, they would be weighted. So if a kid took a college in the schools, they would get some extra weighting. We would have to figure out what that weighting is. The reason why this is coming up now is that kids are registering for PSEO courses. So your high school teachers would like you to consider this and of those who like this option, they, and it's probably more of them um, on the high school I'm talking about, um, they would like you to act if you feel okay and comfortable with this so they can start putting it into motion and letting the, uh, kids know that this is an option. I do need to let you know that, um, you are going to get some kickback from elementary teachers because el, high school have two preps every day. Elementary teachers do not have that long for preps. And so it's gonna be perceived in some quarters that high school teachers are now getting even more prep and even more work time. That's not the intention of this, but that's, you're gonna hear about it. So I just wanna give you a heads up on that. So the expectation would be that those college in the schools teachers, it's really still five days a week. Advanced placement is still five days a week. It's more small group, um, on the two days of the week. So that's the essence of it. If you say yes to this, um, in talking, we believe that you will retain some high school kids who now are going PSEO. You'll make it more attractive for them. Um, you will hear some high school teachers, um, wor, worry about lowering standards, uh, lowering rigor. Uh, the economic reality of the way the PSEO rules are set up is that, um, losing kids because you're just not as attractive compared to what the colleges are offered. So this would be an attempt to make it more attractive for those kids who are looking, um, at that option.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we do this, we pass this tonight and go, go forward with it.
Support.
The reason why I'm doing this is if we do it in two weeks or be, sometime in, in March, all the kids will already be read, not all, but a lot will be already registered and we'll miss this opportunity. This way, we might be able to capture some of those students that really wanna stay here. And it, that'll help us, not immediately with the budget, but it will show a trend that we can use in the future.
Is this, is this registering all done with the counselors at the high school?
They're heavily involved, yes.
That's okay, because I'm wondering if the, any children that, or, not children, young adults that have already registered. If we could, if the counselors could look at that to see, they can tell them that this option now is available if they've already registered.
Yep, if that is possible, that kids can change their selection, their selections.
Right, yeah, I'd like to make sure that that's offered to those. Now, um, when we had gotten the budget, it said that we could maybe save a hundred, up to two hundred thousand on this, so. Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
My notes said before the end of the month, it would be nice to have that, so, uh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm very in favor of it. I think it's a great idea. Um, hopefully it'll retain some kids in our school. I just think that, um, we are, you know, learning has changed and we need to get with the times too. And I just think it's a really good thing all around, so I'm very in favor of it.
Great. So Tim put it, um, the vote out there, for any second it.
I support it.
We've done the discussion, we're good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? It passes. Then we have, now we're to reports, correct?
Yep.
First one's indigenous education update.
Yep.
Indigenous education update. Emily?
Emily?
Or not Emily?
No. Mr. Seifert?
Hello, sir. Hello, everyone. I'm Jared Seifert. I'm the chairman of the Rock Ridge AIPAC, American Indian Parent Action Committee. And I'm giving the annual statements regarding concurrence. I'm sure you've seen in the news over the past week, the loose schools voted non-concurrents. So they're going to have to be going through some major upgrades, policy updates to accommodate and basically assist their Native American population. Currently, our AIPAC was very close voting non-concurrents with some improvements we see needed to be made in relation to our Native American population. Um, right now, we have agreed that you are meeting Minnesota statutes and you are meeting the majority of the needs of our American Indian students. Um, right now, we're hoping that this, we're giving the district a year to improve their relationship with our students, improve the policies. Um, right now, we would like to see additional trainings for teachers. Um, I know we have been in discussions with this, some working sessions. And on top of that, we're hoping these changes that happen at Rock Ridge will improve the relationships with the Native American students. We'd also like to see the restorative justice practices installed in the school districts more actively followed in the coming year. And we'd also like to see schools using the Indian education staff for supporting our students during IEP meetings, behavior meetings, um, attendance conferences. We would like to see more involvement with Tyler, Maria and Emily at all of our schools. Um, right now, we're here to help our students and to advocate for them and for the Native American community and basically serve as a bridge between Rock Ridge and our American Indian communities. Right now, our program has been consistently improving our students' outcomes. Uh, right now, for the past ten years, all Native American seniors minus one have graduated nationwide. Right now, cohorts is averaging around seventy percent to seventy-four percent. So our three American Indian staff members have been doing a great job supporting the students, pushing them forward in academics, pushing them forward just to be better students and pushing forward for more recognition and more education involving the Native American communities. Um, all of our events, uh, we're currently having, we have the Orange Shirt Day, we do college visits, uh, we have a powwow coming up and spreading knowledge about in Native American cultures and our practices. And all of these events, all these milestones and all these achievements are because of our dedicated team of the three faculty here and because of our AIPAC and our communities pushing forward and encouraging our students to work harder. Right now, they're put, putting the work into better our students and right now, we hope that the district will step up and work to better our students and our staff in the coming year.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, are all the events that, that like Emily has or the group, are they all open to the public?
Yes, they are.
Okay, because I was told that they aren't.
AIPAC meetings, um, as long as you can attend, you wouldn't have a voting voice because you'd have to be in the Native American community or parents. Um, right now, like with the upcoming powwow.
Which are family events, they are like, we just put out our invites just to our community because that's what our funding has to go to.
Yep.
Our funding can't go to like the whole, anyone who shows up all the time.
Okay.
Uh, but for our powwow, um, that is a different grant funded, um, so that is open to the public.
Okay.
So we will state that when we put those things out.
Okay.
Like with the powwow, we are actually, there's going to be two grand conferences. One is going to be around one o'clock or one thirty, so we will actually have the student body be able to attend and actually see what an actual powwow is like.
Good.
Um, and that will be followed up at six PM for the community at large.
Okay, and so that's going to be advertised or on Facebook or somewhere?
Yep, um, the first init- Yep, the first initial mail or Facebook post went out two days ago, I believe. And more information will come as soon as we get on the speakers, time's hammered out, when the dancers will be there. Everything, you'll be getting additional information primarily on Facebook. Also, if you are, would like to get email the information, you can reach out to me, I can send you emails letting you know when. Like especially with the community and with the school board members, if you do wanna be present at an APAC meeting to see what goes on, let me know, we'd be happy to get you an invitation.
Okay, which students are going to be able to come to the powwow or the kickoff at one thirty?
Was it specific classes right now for the one thirty grab entry?
I didn't wanna talk about it yet because I haven't discussed all the specifics with Mark, so.
Okay.
That will be.
Oh, so it's high school then? It's, it's just high school?
At one thirty.
During the day and like probably the Indian is from the elementaries, but yeah, for the general student population, it'll just be the high school.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, okay, thank you.
And then if we do have interest from the other schools, the parents, other students, the public grand entry will be at six PM, so they will be able to attend also.
Okay.
In, in the past years, I don't know if it was during homecoming in that you did your traditional, either you had traditional food and other children, it was open for all campus, correct? And didn't you have a, one time a year ago or two, we had.
We made fried bread, fried bread for students at large. That was the last year at the Virginia High School, I believe it was. And then every year, we've always had homecoming.
Yeah. Didn't you have some native games that?
Yep.
And everybody got involved, so there is a lot of interaction. I'm, I'm the advisor from the board, so.
I'm on that with you now this year too.
Huh?
I'm on that with you now.
Yeah.
For those type of events too that include like the general population, our funding cannot go to those things. Our funding has to be for just our indigenous population only. So we can't spend money on fried bread for all students or things like that. So we've been collaborating with other funding to try to do more of those things. And that's exactly where like the district, voting compliant and not compliant, like the district can be putting in for those kinds of events. Speakers, guest speakers, indigenous games, those things, because we cannot pay for those with our funding.
If the district would like to, like Emily was saying, if they'd like to step in and start contributing, we can definitely expand these to the student population as a whole. Right now, with like Emily was saying, with the grants we have right now, it has to stay within the Native American community, within the APAC, within our students.
Sure, thank you.
And I believe there is a form that Stacy has for the school board to sign in the, and I think you've already signed it, I'm not sure. But if that could be signed and sent back to me tomorrow, that'd be great.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, you're.
Thank you.
I keep on getting you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Willie Spence.
And Jill.
And Jill.
And Jill. Sorry, Jill.
Good evening. Thank you for this time tonight, appreciate it. What we're here to talk about, and we'll try to go quickly for you, I know it's been long already for you, but we're here to talk about the, little more of the specifics on our job shadow week, March twenty-fourth through March twenty-eighth. Dr. Schmidt and I talked about it in the strategic plan and we realized we had a little bit of a hole after ninth grade, so we wanted to get a specific intentional job shadow experience set up for our eleventh graders. And you'll hear me add twelfth graders in a little bit, but I'm just going to read, otherwise I can ramble too long and I don't wanna miss anything, so. Jill, Jill's our high school career counselor, I apologize, and I'm the director of school-to-work engagement and we work together on all of the expos that we have. We work together on projects like this, getting our kids job shadow experiences, getting our kids work experiences. Oftentimes, sometimes for credit, as we work, go towards this, something you'll hear more about called WBL or work-based learning. We applied for a youth skills training grant for that. Then we'll really start putting kids out if we get that grant. Putting kids out into the community for credit, actually working in a field that is approved through the work-based learning grant. Jill and several high school teachers will be working on that. Wanna quickly give a thanks to the high school teachers during this March twenty-fourth through twenty-eighth for being patient with us. So kids are going to be coming and going that whole week. So the job shadow week is an initiative marketed to eleventh and twelfth graders and will allow them to further their skill set and dive deeper into careers that they have learned about over the past couple of years, whether going on industry tours or listening to speakers. Jill and I personally reached out to over seventy businesses right in this twenty-mile radius. Over the last few weeks, we pounded the pavement, met with the employers in person, made phone calls, sent electronic communications. And some were established partners, some were established partners already and others have become new customers, which we're happy about just because of this. This was a community-wide initiative marketed on social media to make sure all community stakeholders vying to participate were included. And that's how several reached out to us, hey, we saw this on the social media post, ready to go Stacy, thanks. And as of March tenth, we have over forty local businesses committed to hosting our Rock Ridge students. Think about that in this little area that we live, right? We have over forty businesses that have sent us specific schedules, numbers of kids. It is absolutely incredible. And that equates to over five hundred job shadow opportunities just inside those forty businesses. Whether Minnesota Power took twelve on Monday, twelve on Tuesday, twelve on Wednesday, twelve on Thursday, or whether Lake Country Power took twelve and twelve and twelve, or whether it's just Giants Ridge took ten and ten, it's just incredible. So what, the students that are eligible are our one hundred and ninety-two juniors and we're now, because of the five hundred opportunities, going to open it up to the one hundred and fifty-two seniors. Now, it's, it's not mandatory, but man, do we hope these kids take advantage of this opportunity. Parents, please, please encourage your kids to take this opportunity, this is going to be incredible. So we have created more opportunities than we have students. This was to ensure all juniors and seniors will have the same opportunity to participate, yet find something individualized to meet their interests. Students capitalizing on this opportunity will gain an incredible advantage over their peers when it comes to scholarships, college, and job applications. This process will continue to enhance their confidence when networking with adults in our community. Several of the jobs, I'm just gonna read these up, so hang with me. Education, childcare, mechanical and electrical engineering, insurance, law enforcement, culinary, hospitality, line worker, line stake, or electrical equipment technicians, member service technicians, purchasing managers, warehouse, PR and communications, accounting, billing and call centers, new service managers and rep, member service reps, nurse, x-ray tech, fire EMT, automotive technicians, dentistry, broadcast journalism, accounting, human resources, marketing, social media, advertising, sales, construction, trades, law, milrite, and there's others because we've had more come in even today. So all of those experiences will be available for the kids to choose from tomorrow, period six.
Yep. Juniors.
The juniors, period six tomorrow. And we'll figure out a way to get the seniors now with school being closed on Wednesday and Thursday. We'll get them electronically and get it out to them after we give the juniors a chance to bring it home, talk to their parents, work out transportation, everything that goes with that. So this has been a tremendous effort from both Jill and me and the magnitude and support from our business partners has been surreal. An event of this capacity has never been attempted here in northern Minnesota and will provide Rock Ridge students opportunities that are unmatched. Without the collaboration of both myself, the director of school-to-work engagement, and Jill, the career counselor, in these positions, this would not be possible, this is way too big of an undertaking. The partnership and collaboration between business and school will continue to evolve, making Rock Ridge High School the envy of work-based learning initiatives in high schools across Minnesota.
I'm very excited about this because I, this is one of the things I was passionate about, about the career academies and stuff. Because, yeah, but because a lot of kids don't know about other jobs, you know, you're on, you only know what you're exposed to. So we have a lot of students that end up picking things, you know, that, you know, their parent's a teacher, they go into teaching. Their parent is a electrician, they go into, you know. And so I like the idea of being able to have other opportunities for students to go and check out, you know, what it's all about for different jobs, I think it's great, thank you for doing it.
Thank you.
We had discussed that, do we go to the businesses first or the students first? We decided to go to the businesses first and they get, like he said, five hundred job shadow appointments that we have. And the kids can look through them and pick from them, because I don't know if the students would've came up with five hundred, but our community did. And it's amazing, we're, we're very proud of this project that we've done, so.
Awesome.
That's very awesome, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Keep going, it's all right. I just wanna give a shout out to Indian Ed, I was lucky enough way back in nineteen eighty-eight through ninety-one at St. Scholastica. Tim, we maybe talked about this, to have a lot of Indian Ed classes during my education time and that's a great program for our kids. Carl Goboy and Mrs. King down there, they were great and I was fortunate enough to take those classes, so well done, Indian Ed. Thank you.
And Mike.
Good evening, my name's Mike, I work with the buildings and grounds and the custodians and the maintenance. I'm here to talk about my strategic plan and if you, I think you have this in front of you. If you wanna go to the custodial first, if you go from left to right, you'll see that we're in sustaining and we've been there for a little bit, and the reason that is, is because we're opening buildings, closing buildings, moving custodians. We dropped down to twenty-six total maintenance, custodian, I guess that includes the whole staff. So we're constantly moving to the, whenever we have like this building, so we have to make adjustments. So we're constantly doing that, that's why we're in the sustaining. Also wanna thank you for the equipment you let us get. It's being used in every building, so it was dispersed kinda equally, so everybody got some. It's all being used, I think it's helping. But that's why we're in the sustaining, just so you know that. It's like a work in progress. And it depends on the season, depends on what's going on at the school, just so we have coverage, so everything gets handled. And that's a custodial. In the buildings and grounds, which kinda runs the same, because we've been moving, we've been building, we've been adding, we're learning a lot about the buildings. You know, every day it seems like we find a new, oh, oh my God, we got this capability or we got that. So that kinda runs with the custodians. And I think next year, we'll have even a better grip after we go for a whole year when you see the, what parts of the building are used more as far as, back to the custodian, what the need is. So that's good, in the buildings and grounds, our fields, kinda really excited about that because we have had training, we know how to repair. Now we'll be putting beads back into the baseball and softball fields this spring. As, I don't know if you drove by there or not, but the fields were kinda ready to go. I think they practiced softball on them today, so, which is kinda early, which is great. So we're getting better and better and now we just gotta do a little bit of, I guess, our windscreen's a little bit loose down there. You can see them blowing in the wind, we're gonna fix them tomorrow. We did some research, we found a better tie, so that doesn't happen as often, so. But the, the fields are growing, I think they're getting better and better all the time, so. Guess that's all I got, everything's a work in motion. Hopefully, we just get better and better and go. Another thing is, I did write on there, you guys have asked me in the past on the custodians, me personally, I know we're in a budget crisis and everything else, but I do think we're still one short in high school.
One short in high school? Okay.
But that's my opinion, I just had to say that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And transportation update, Bob Boss.
Evening, board members, from new board members here, my name's Bob Boss, I'm the transportation director for the district. I've supplied you with a couple of things here tonight. One is my part of the strategic plan and another part of it is our vehicle inventory as it exists today, okay? In my strategic plan, under extending, our bus routes were all built in last year, towards the end of the year. The results are, we have really safe routes for our students and they're about as efficient as they can be. We had our, our company that supplies our software also provides consulting, so I had been consulting with them and they said our routes are about as efficient as they could possibly, they can't find a better way to do it, is what they're telling me. For implementing, we had, we wanted to implement a rotation for our buses because we had a lot of old buses after the consolidation. And we wanted to keep them kinda within ten years. And today, I talked to our, our bus company and our buses are here that we ordered eighteen months ago, they're sitting in Monticello. They're gonna start delivering either this week or next week. So we're gonna be getting rid of quite a few of our buses to update the fleet a little bit. Also, under sustaining, our maintenance and transportation secretary, I had her trained by our software company. She, she can navigate around it fairly well. It's just gonna take time for her to master it. It took me almost four years to get to the point that I'm at right now, it's, it's a difficult program to learn. So she's working on that. Under our lagging indicators, I kinda supplied you with our cost per mile that a bus uses, the number of students that we have on the buses, the miles that the bus travels per day, and really what the cost is per student. And you can see the numbers go up and down on the students because it tends to be a little bit higher towards the start of the school year because we don't, we're not positive who's gonna be riding the bus, but as the school year goes on, we wanna strip the kids off of the bus who actually are not riding the bus. And that's just a safety issue if something should happen to the bus, so we wanna know who is exactly on the bus. The cost per mile, that's something that is, is, I, I give, at the end of the year, by August fifteenth, I give Andrea, our business manager, all of the miles that the buses have, have traveled, and what they're for, and the maintenance costs. And she plugs it into a spreadsheet and she comes up with the number of what the price per mile is next school year. I've seen that as high as four dollars and two cents a mile, I've seen it as low as two sixty. Right now, it started out last year, it was three sixty-one, now it's three forty-five. So that just kinda tells you about what's going on there. I also gave you, in the strategic plan, and the sheet that is behind it also, which is a little easier to understand. Just kinda goes through what our fleet looks like right now. We're gonna be getting rid of, we, we actually had to scrap bus seventeen and bus twenty-four because of engine problems. It just didn't pay the cost to fix them anymore. And then two of them, bus twenty-six and twenty-nine, are getting traded this coming week when they deliver the buses.
What type of buses are we getting?
We're getting international buses, yep.
How many are we getting, Bob?
Four. Yep. Training a router, training a router for the transportation department, our maintenance secretary, as I said, has been trained. She's coming along, it's gonna take her time to master the skill of using that software. Our leading indicators, all routes for the district are, they're completed. I completed them at the end of last school year. I, I actually eliminated two routes for budgetary purposes during that time. The routes ended up being a modified two-tier system and what I mean by that is we take the elementary kids home, like in Virginia and in Evlith and Gilbert. And then not so much in the Evlith side because it, the elementary, they could fit on one bus. But on the Virginia side, because of the distance from the high school and the timing, they take all the kids home on the elementary school and then they go to the high school. So the buses are almost kinda empty except for the rural kids when, when they go to the high school. We did, we were able to get rid of two routes and that helped. We did, we were able to get rid of two routes, and that helped, that also helps reduce the load size in the afternoons when you've got more kids tend to ride the buses in the afternoons, whether they're elementary or whether they're high school kids. We held group meetings with the principals last year, and that's when we decided on what the bell times were going to be and how we were going to, how we all came into agreement on how we were going to run transportation to the best that the schools possibly use them. As I said before, the buses are already in, they're in Monticello right now, and they're going to be on their way up here. I've also had numerous Zoom meetings with our software company. That started back in eleven of twenty-three. And this was for the start of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The routes that I developed, they're, they're efficient. The number of students per bus, the routes and the, the cost of just transporting the students is about as efficient as it could possibly be. Routing is never finished. Every day it changes. There are kids coming into the district. There are kids leaving the district. Kids are moving from one side of town to the other, so it just, it changes every day. So over the next year, I think what I'm going to be looking at here is the feasibility of, is it possible to move our school district to, should it be what it is today? Should it be a transportation owned by a school district? Or should it be owned privately? So I'm going to, I'm going to take a look at that over the next year. I'll be looking at it from both a practical and a financial standpoint. You know, we'll, I'll collaborate with other school districts who have made this move and see if this movement would be right for Rock Ridge.
What would that do for, to our bus drivers? Would they lose their jobs?
Well, they, they would, they would probably be able to stay. They would just be working for somebody else.
Somebody else. Are you talking yourself out of a job?
No. Nope. Not at all. You know, I'm looking at it, I'm just looking at budgetary any way that I can do it. Okay? This second sheet, this just kind of outlines what our, our fleet looks like today. It's, it's separated into two separate things, the buses that we have and the Suburbans that we have. And we use the Suburbans to transport kids to activities when we don't need a bus. These are only the vehicles that the school district owns that kids can travel on. A lot of the, a lot of the vehicles that we have, kids can't travel on. They have to be inspected by the state. We currently have, we currently have thirty-one buses. Some of them are for, some of them are for, if one breaks down, we have others to pick from. And then we have ten Suburbans, six coming from Virginia, Old Virginia District, and four coming from the Evlith District. They're all in good shape except for Suburban number thirty-seven and forty-two. They are actually newer. They're two thousand and fifteen. But their, their rocker panels are rotten. It's just the year, and we got them both at the same time, and they're both rotting. So can they be, I, I have an inspection coming up in April. I'm going to see if they will pass them in the inspection. They may not. And if they don't, we move those into the maintenance, from, from transportation to maintenance, and the maintenance staff uses them. So right now, we have, once they deliver these four buses, we have, we're shooting for that ten-year mark. We'll only have three buses that are older than ten years. And that's, we had almost half of the fleet older than ten years, two years ago. Two, two or three years ago when we first consolidated. So that's come along very, very well. That's kind of put us in a position now, I have to think about ordering buses for the next school year. These are coming tomorrow or the next day, but I have to be thinking about next year. The bus companies are telling me that, see, the buses that we got right now that are coming, that was an eighteen-month order. We ordered those eighteen months ago. That's how long it took to get them. They've said that time is cut now to about twelve, thirteen months. So I have to be thinking that far out. Suburbans, if I was to order it from, like a Washke's, we bought our last one from Washke's. Or that we bought from Iron Trail, those are about a year out too. And it depends on when you order them, that you can get a fleet Suburban, otherwise you got to buy a fancier version of it. But we are in a really good position right now, and for budgetary purposes, I think that, I'm, I'm kind of recommending that we could possibly not buy buses or Suburbans in the next school year. It's your decision as a board, what you want me to do. But we are probably in a position, it, it does impact the strategic plan a bit, but for the budgetary purposes, if you didn't want me to buy Suburbans or buses, we'll be okay, I think.
Don't look at him. Awesome.
Right.
So that's what I have for you there. Okay. Regarding the daycare, okay? Let me explain to everybody here that don't know, doesn't know. So the boundary line, the, the elementary attendance boundary line runs, picture it this way, runs from, by Wabick, down towards Gilbert. It kind of, it, it, it carves out McKinley, and it carves out Midway and keeps running west, and goes through Mountain Iron all the way to Buell. Students who live, elementary students who live on the north side of that line attend Parkview, North Star. Also the Midway kids, Parkview, North Star. Kids to the south, attend Laurentian. McKinley kids, attend Laurentian. Okay? That's your boundary line. Okay? Buses do not cross the boundary line to transport students. If a parent in Virginia wants their student to go to Laurentian, and the principal signs off that that's okay, that parent has to transport them to Laurentian. Vice versa, the same thing. If a student lives in Evlith, Gilbert, Parkview can give them permission, North Star can give them permission to come there. Parent has to transport. That has been true for the daycares also. Okay? So that's the background on it.
How many students do we have doing that right now, do you think?
You know, I cannot tell you the answer to that. I, I don't know. There are some kids though. Then there are, there are moms and dads who transport kids to the whole school.
Because they're crossing the lines.
Yep. What does it do? What does the boundary line do? It creates, it creates busing efficiency, both in cost to the district and times that the bus has to travel. It cuts down on ride times. It, it allows us to have this two-tier busing system. But the main thrust of the elementary attendance boundary line was to balance the number of students in each school. Correct? Yes. Okay. That's what the reason for the boundary line is. It's been in existence for three full years right now. Now, the problem is, the problem with the daycare is that for me to dedicate a bus just for this reason, I don't have the staff to do it. I don't. I, I actually, right now, I'm driving a bus every day, almost, because I don't have the staff. The cost, the, the cost is really irrelevant, but if I had to dedicate a bus to go get the kids in the morning and bring them back in the afternoon, that cost would be about nineteen thousand dollars for the full school year, one hundred and seventy-three days. On the other hand, as it, as been stated, bus seven does go to the high school. And could it swing into the daycare? Yes, it could. But there's no way to get the kids in the morning. But there's no way to get the kids in the morning from the daycare to the school. We could get them to the, we could do it if we picked them up after we dropped off the high school kids. But we would be dropping off, we would drop off the high school kids. They're, the, the buses are scheduled to be there at eight o'clock. Some are there a little earlier, some are there a little later. You just never know. But they're scheduled to be at the high school at eight o'clock. Could the bus go to Laurentian, pick up the kids, and bring them into Virginia, to the North Star, and to the Parkview? Yes, but Parkview and North Star start at seven fifty in the morning. So by the time that they pick up the kids at eight o'clock, bring them to town, these kids are now twenty to twenty-five minutes late for school every day. I checked with the principals. The principal said, that's not an acceptable, that's not acceptable. So that's kind of where we're sitting. This is just to give you the facts on this.
I think we need to figure out a way that, that it can work.
Well, the third problem is, we have other daycares. We have Milestones in Virginia. We had another one in Virginia. It was Virginia Drop and Daycare. That one's closed now. We have Iron Range Tikes. That's over towards the Walmart in Mountain Iron. That's on the northern side of the boundary line. On the other side, we have a smaller one out on Station Forty-four, and we have Brandy's Daycare. So we have to think, what, what are, what are the other daycares going to say if we do this?
Now, I have a question for you.
Go ahead.
Forget the other daycares. This is an emergency. This is not a planned thing. This is a one-time exception. Can we get something to work from here to the end of the year? That isn't going to cost an arm and a leg.
If the principals don't care that the kids are twenty minutes late for school or twenty-five minutes late for school? Yes.
How many kids? Do you know how many?
I do not. I'm assuming that's probably more.
In the morning, there's only like six kids that ride.
And what age would they be?
In the afternoon, there's thirteen.
In the afternoon, we're, we're covered though.
Afternoon is always more kids, everything.
But we're covered because we have buses going that way.
Yes.
You could do that.
What ages are, are in the morning the six? Are they kindergarten?
I can drive, I can drive a Suburban, can't I?
Well, pre-K.
You could, yes.
Both Parkview and North Star, kids in the morning.
Just pre-K.
Well, no, we've got pre-K and we have a second grader.
Next meeting, we'll talk about.
But in the morning, we have less than half of what we have in that.
Or, well, maybe we can talk.
Obviously, it'd be ideal to have both. But our parents figuring out how they're going to get the kids one way would be a lot better than our parents trying to figure out how they're going to get them and then go back and pick them up. You know, they're going back and forth to daycare with that. So there, in the morning right now, there's only six that go on the bus, but in the afternoon, there's thirteen plus.
So if we just did the afternoon one, that would be for, for this year?
Would be a huge relief.
Relief.
It would give parents half as much to figure out every day. It's a lot easier to carpool with six kids than, you know, thirteen.
And then next year, you would figure something out.
You'll be in Virginia again.
You have to look at next year. I know that if Laurentian's not doing the pre-K program, there will be buses running for those pre-K kids, I'm assuming. Maybe that would work in with the routes if they're already bringing precares to our center at that time. But right now, I'm just trying to look out for our families. They've been out of daycare for weeks now because we have water dripping into the building. It's been going on since January. We reopened, IRR helped us. We spent about ten thousand dollars to reopen, and, and now we're closed again. And I just want to.
Do you think that site's ever going to reopen in Virginia?
What we would like to do is reopen and run both centers because you won't have Brandy's anymore. And Iron Range Tikes is there, but they're out of our school district. And there's also a waiting list in every center, ours and Iron Range Tikes, so it's not an option for families.
And, and the Virginia facility is estimated probably around one point five million to bring up to.
Close standard.
And so you've lost Brandy's. That doesn't exist anymore as of Wednesday. Our agency's made a huge investment to bring them into the facility, or we would lose two hundred and fifty slots to Quad Cities. So some type of solution is super important for these childcare slots, or the district's going to be feeling a little bit.
How many, how many kids can be transported in a Suburban? I, and you don't have enough drivers. I'm just, would one Suburban in the morning transport their, the kids?
Six, small kids, six in the back, back seats.
I think we can problem solve this. Maybe it goes to, I would make a suggestion that we just go to our committee, transportation committee, and then problem solve it. And are you on that committee or who's?
I don't, I might be.
I'm not sure. I think we can.
I think we should make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we have, let's start with after school. If Bob could figure that out, and let's say he started in two weeks, so Bob has a couple of weeks to, to work on.
Buses are already running. Would, would it be a problem for you to start that next week? Because?
It would.
Nope.
So we could start it.
Because the buses, the bus is already running in the afternoon.
But I do want you to be aware, you're going to have other daycares who aren't going to be happy about that.
They're not in our district, correct?
Well, it doesn't even matter. This, we're a community here. This is an emergency. We help each other. The, let us worry about the other daycares. That would be you people, not me.
I make a motion that we transport those students to Brandy's After School.
It's not Brandy's Apple Tree.
Oh, it'll be called Apple Tree, I'm sorry.
Apple Tree.
Apple Tree for the remainder of the school year, and we'll deal with for next year. But that's my motion.
For the rest of the year.
School year, yes.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All goes in favor?
Should we discuss or?
Or, yeah, discuss?
Okay, I still think that it would behoove to go to the committee, but I do think like right away that we could make that happen. But Tim had some like ideas too, that he, like even with the Suburban and ideas. So I, don't you think you should, this wouldn't be the place to talk it out, get it out of the committee?
I don't. Either that, or I, I can run by an idea I have with Noel, and we can come up, we can get back to them by next week.
Okay.
Right, because you, as a board, you're clearly hearing Bob Boss say, he can transport them in the morning. They're just going to be twenty minutes, twenty-five.
Well, does it matter if six kids are twenty minutes late for the rest of the year, which is what, March, we're into March? So, yeah, just a couple of months. Is that a big deal or?
Well.
It is a big deal.
It is a big deal.
Okay, she is, yes, it is a big deal.
Let's work on, we, we'll solve this one. We'll go to the, the six kids and get that figured out hopefully by next week.
My motion is just for the, the afternoon.
Yeah, okay.
I'll go with that.
That would help them out, and we can figure out.
Yeah, I'm, I am concerned about open up Pandora's box, that this is going to be part of the school's responsibility to start running for daycare. I hear you, that this is an emergency situation.
It wasn't planned. It, it, I mean, what happens if one of, one of them had a fire? And they had to transport from the north side to the south? What if Mountain Iron's had a problem? Are we going to say no to them?
And the six kids getting in late, that is, that is an issue too.
That, yeah, she, she.
So we can't.
But that's not going to be for this year, because the parents will be transporting them. With my motion, the parents are going to.
We're not even talking about the morning kids, Jennifer. We're just going to motion, your motion is just for the afternoon.
Right.
Okay, and you second?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that's to start on the seventeenth?
Next Monday.
Next Monday, I'll start on the seventeenth. It's against your parents, no.
That's all I have for you, Director Bonner, I'll have those routes for you, probably next quarter.
Okay, thanks, Bob.
If I can get on the agenda.
Thanks.
Thank you, Bob. Hey, student representative, is she there?
Here.
I'll reach out to her. And Parkview Elementary.
I'm so excited to get up here, you don't have to call me. Good evening, I am here to tell you a little bit about the things that have been going on at Parkview. First of all, we just finished up our I Love to Read Month, and the theme that our, we had two co-chairs, Matressa Strayer and Hannah Davidson-Tep, and their theme this year was Parkview and the Purple Crown, kind of followed the Herald and the Purple Crown book from, I think, back when I was young. And the students really, they really liked that, it was different, they really liked that, they did a lot of reading. We set a goal for them, if they could read, it was like a thousand books or so many minutes, you know, depending on grade level, that the staff would sleep on the roof, and they did it. So, last Thursday, there was thirteen staff members that gathered up some tents and went on top of the roof of Parkview, and we did some live streaming of bedtime stories for the kids and slept in our little tent. We might have gone inside to eat quick. And then, in the morning, we greeted the kids when they came back to school, we waved from the top of the roof again. So, I know that Stacy has put that out on social media, I think I saw it go out today, so that was fun, the kids really liked that. We got some good support from parents, they said that.
Did you sleep on the top?
I did. I may have cheated a little bit, but yes, I was there all night, that's what I'm gonna tell ya. I did go home in the morning to take a shower though, cause I just couldn't do that. My next bullet point was that the second grade was headed to the Rife on Thursday, but that's no longer happening. We had, during our I Love to Read Month at the end of February, every year we have Title One family engagement activities that we have to do, that's part of the federal grant for Title One. In the past couple of years, we've done it together, this year, we decided to do it in our own buildings, and our Parkview Title One staff partnered with Shannon Kush and a Northland grant that she had received, and we invited our Parkview students to a book bingo, and we ran that the last week of I Love to Read Month, and we had over two hundred and some people there, so it was very highly attended, and that was great to have, we had some pizza, cookies, book bingo with books as prizes and other different prizes, so that was awesome too. We started registration for kindergarten and pre-K threes and fours last week, we are in the second week of registration. Currently, that's from when I left school today, there were thirty-one students registered for kindergarten at Parkview and thirty-eight students registered for pre-K threes and fours. So, and remember, the kindergarten numbers are just my Parkview numbers, the threes and fours are all early childhood numbers, whether they're threes are at Laurentian or fours are at Parkview, so yeah, those are all the numbers so far. And then, lastly, we have, it'll start next week on Monday, our PTAs, and I say that plural because Parkview North Star PTA is all one, and the Laurentian PTA decided to partner up, we're trying to do things together. And the PTAs are partnering up for what is called a Glow Run. It's a company called Booster, and it's a new fundraiser that we're trying. It is kids, we have one week, and you just promote for that one week to get some online donations, and kids can ask their families and things, it's all online, no money handling for the kids or the school. And then, at the end of those days, so we will run it the seventeenth through the twenty-fourth, and then on the twenty-fifth, all of our students will be going over to the high school, kind of like a mini field trip, and doing a Glow Run, we're gonna shut the lights off in the gym and they're gonna light it up with little light-up truck and dark glow. So, we're excited about that, to see how that goes for us to hopefully raise some funds for our PTAs to help support the field trips that we do, so and the cost of transportation as well.
Right, yeah, good.
Is there a contact person for the Parkview PTA? Is there somebody?
Yes, I, yes.
Can you reach out to me with that?
I will do that, I will send it to Brandy, yes.
And there was an open house tonight, wasn't there?
There is an open house, I believe it's tonight at Parkview and it may be tomorrow, I think, at Laurentian. For those preschool families, whether they're going into threes or fours, to help with questioning, transportation, the scholarships, the fees and all of that, so just kind of an informational session as well as maybe help and support for those families that need that.
Okay, good. Anything else?
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tina.
Superintendent.
Nope. Oh, superintendent, I thought we were just gonna bypass anyone.
You know, I looked at that too and thought it's upside down there, but.
Trying to steal my little thunder. Okay, thank you, members of the board, just a couple of things to update you on. The first one is the Evlith property. What is happening with the old school property in Evlith? We are still on target to close at the end of March. The closing will involve, will not involve where our buses are, but it will involve everything else. Where the gym is, the old tennis courts are still there, where the football field used to be, so we're still on track. Hopefully, that closing will be done by the end of March. So, that's number one. The second one is just to let everyone know, and those watching, that we do have a school board election coming up, special school board election on April eighth. So, reminding everyone, please get out and vote. So, there is a school board election coming up on April eighth. Third thing is the highway construction season is approaching. And those of you who have come up the road to the high school, you've probably noticed that there are some trees that are missing. So, they are currently taking out the trees that they're going to need for the Highway Fifty-three project. There will be an open house, and I believe it's going to be on April first, where anyone from the community can come in and talk to and hear what's gonna happen, what the timeframes are, and that will be Mendon, St. Louis County, running that in some combination. Don't hold me to it on April first, but that's, it could be somewhere around that date. And we will have it in, we've had them in the commons, we have plenty of commons over in the high school, so it's probably going to be over there once we can figure out the date. And then folks can come in and hear straight and see exactly what's gonna happen. But it's gonna be fairly significant for the area. Don't worry, we will survive it, people will just need to drive a little slower, there will be some detours that people will have to take. Just enjoy the scenery, drive a little slower, and we're all going to get through it. The big intersection down by Slumberland, which is going to be where a roundabout will be put in there, don't worry, it is possible to learn how to go through a roundabout, it's gonna be okay. That intersection is gonna remain open until school is out. The last I've heard, once school is out, that intersection is going to be shifted, it's gonna be closed. They're gonna move the traffic around, and they're gonna do that because we want them to have that roundabout done before school starts in August, September. And they're telling me they can do it, but they're gonna have to shut, and it'll work better for them. It's faster, easier, they can get the equipment in, but people will just have to go a little slower around, and they're all around the area. It will be working, I believe, on Borgon Road as it intersects Fifty-three, and I believe they also be working on a J-turn down closer to Seasons where you're going in.
Five Seasons?
Five Seasons, Supra.
Right around there, they'll be working on that one too. There's a bridge they're also gonna be working on a little further south, taking out one down there. So, it'll be significant, but once it's done, will traffic be going faster through the area? It'll be going smoother, there'll be fewer potential for accidents, but it should go a little smoother without having the lights there. So, just wanna get everyone an update that it's coming.
Who owns the property where the trees are being taken down?
Right away.
It's just, yeah, this.
I think it's right away.
Just right, okay, I was just wondering.
We don't.
Okay, I was wondering who owned that property, okay.
And you've probably noticed that they're starting to take some trees down, when you start going up Progress Parkway Road on the right, they're starting to take out some trees there, and that's because, I don't know if they'll be working on it, but there's a second roundabout that's gonna happen at some point, and it's gonna be where the White Cedar Drive, where you go into the baseball, softball fields, so there's gonna be another road that comes into there, and in the second roundabout there, so, which will make it even more exciting to go through two roundabouts. That is what's gonna happen in the future, so that's why.
And a J-turn, don't forget the J-turn.
No, we're looking forward to the J-turn, I know that's a controversial thing, but it's coming. And then the last thing, I need a date from the school board. I need one more work-study session with you on the budget. And so, before your twenty-fourth of March meeting, which I think will have to be an actionable meeting for certain parts of the budget, so I need a date when you're free, and it could be next Monday, whatever date works for you.
Monday would work for me.
Monday's good for me.
When does John get back?
I don't know if he's coming back, I'm not sure.
Monday would.
What time Monday?
Huh?
What time on Monday?
What time would work for you on Monday?
You don't know?
I don't know, yeah.
I'm, I'm open on Mondays, so it doesn't matter.
Five o'clock?
The later would probably.
A little bit.
Six o'clock?
That would be the latest, that would be fine, yeah.
Five thirty?
Seventeen?
Four twenty-fourth.
On the seventeenth?
You're gone to seventeen?
Do it next week or the twenty-fourth?
On the seventeenth.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, one month, I jumped ahead.
Seventeen.
That's when our next meeting is.
I won't be here, I'll be.
You're not gonna be here on the seventeenth? Okay.
I'll be dressed in green.
He's Irish.
Oh, oh, yeah. For what time on the seventeenth?
Six.
Six.
That works for me.
All right, we will set that up, and that's all.
Okay. Treasury's report, can we get a motion to?
I'll second, go ahead.
Reared in second. Okay. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Nobody, okay. Administration items, you kind of hit that, there you go. And the next regular meeting will be on March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, at six PM at the Administration Building. And can I get a motion to adjourn? Good luck to our teams going to state.
Yes, yeah, good luck to the girls and the pantoms and pee-wees.
I make a motion to adjourn, anybody want a second? Okay, Brandy, second.